The time is now 6:30, and I'm going to call this session of the Ridgefield City Council to order. Would you please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Counselor Burkle?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Ms. Julie, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Davis.
Present.
Councilmember Favella, here. Councilmember Wells.
Here.
Councilmember Burkle.
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Mayor Protim Chipman.
Here.
Mayor Cole.
Here.
All right. Mr. Stewart, any late changes to the agenda?
No late changes, Mayor.
Sounds good. Okay, we'll go straight into, we have a proclamation tonight commemorating Pride Month. I'm going to read the proclamation, and we have Ms. Cole here to receive it, and then after we'll come up here and we'll do like a little photo, and then you can go ahead and say some few words at the podium if you'd like. Whereas Pride Month has roots in the Stonewall uprising which occurred in New York City in June 1969. The uprising was a turning point for the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer rights movement sparked by a series of protests against police harassment and discrimination. And whereas in June 1999, Pride Month was nationally recognized to commemorate these events and celebrate the vibrant diversity of the LGBTQ+ community, Pride Month also serves as a reminder that the fight for LGBTQ+ rights is ongoing. And whereas Ridgefield is enriched by the diversity of our city, including LGBTQ+ residents who contribute to the city's cultural, social, and economic life, and our leaders in our community. And whereas discrimination against people from LGBTQ+ community around the country makes it imperative that cities like Ridgefield stand up and show support for the equity, dignity, and human rights for all residents regardless of sexual orientation, gender, identity, or expression. And whereas the city of Ridgefield supports LGBTQ+ rights at local, national, and global levels, recognizing the importance of policies that protect against discrimination and promote inclusion, and emphasize the importance of fostering a cultural acceptance and respect within the community. Now therefore, I, Matt Cole, Mayor of the City of Ridgefield, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2025 as Pride Month, and I encourage all residents to make Ridgefield a stronger community by promoting inclusiveness, celebrating diversity, and supporting all fellow community members, preventing the spread of misinformation, and rejecting hate and bias dated this 22nd day of May 2025 in the City of Ridgefield. Come on up. I think we'll go, and council will go down in front, and we'll take a quick foot.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Jessica Cole, and I'm here tonight on behalf of Evo Cascadia and our LGBTQ+ community to thank you for recognizing June as Pride Month for the fifth year in a row. This proclamation may seem like a small act, but to many people, it means the world. It tells queer residents, especially youth, that they are seen, valued, and supported right here in Ridgefield. That their city acknowledges and celebrates their existence, their identity, and their worth is incredibly powerful. It tells them, and all of us, that Ridgefield is a place where people are valued for who they are, that the city doesn't just tolerate diversity, it embraces it. It's a reminder that love, dignity, and inclusion are community values, and Ridgefield has shown year after year that it's committed to building a future where everyone belongs. At a time when LGBTQ+ people, especially trans and non-binary folks, are facing increasing hostility and erasure, your continued support sends a clear and courageous message. Ridgefield is choosing compassion over fear, inclusion over division, and visibility over silence. That matters more than you may ever know. Evo Cascadia works to elevate underrepresented voices across southwest Washington, and we are proud to celebrate alongside of you. We'd also like to extend an invitation, on August 15th and 16th, we'll be hosting Battleground Pride just down the road. It's a free-to-attend, family-friendly event filled with entertainment, education, and community connection. Everyone's welcome, and we'd love to see Ridgefield represented and celebrating with us. Thank you again for your continued leadership and for helping make this region a more inclusive and affirming place for all. Happy Pride, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on. We have public comment this evening. Anyone requesting to speak to the council regarding items not specific to a public hearing may come forward at this time. Come forward to the podium to use the raise hand feature, or use raise hand feature located on the toolbar at the bottom of your Zoom screen. For controls over the phone, press star nine to raise your hand, and press star six to mute or unmute. Please state your name, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Would anybody here in the room tonight like to give public comment? Looks like nobody in the room. Ms. Julie, anybody online?
Not seeing anyone online here.
Okay, we will move on with our agenda. Onto the consent agenda. Council, I accept the motion to approve.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
A second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to accept the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Thank you very much, council. And then moving on to our first item of business this evening, which is an award for P22010-1. This is the 35th Avenue G Creek Plateau Extension Project Environmental Stage Consultant Contract. Mr. Green, you can lead us off tonight.
Sorry, the agenda snuck up on me before I was ready to come over here, so here I am. Tonight is, I'd like to present to you the motion, or the request for award of contract for the 35th Avenue G Creek Plateau Extension Project. This is, we formerly called it 35th Avenue Extension, but we now have two build alternatives. One is along 35th Avenue alignment, the other is west of there. Both of them go into the G Creek Plateau, so a slight name change. This is the next stage. As you recall, back in December, you moved to all build alternatives forward, and that's the red alternative and the green alternative. It just happens we did around Christmas time, so there you go. But the red alternative is the western one, connects up to, would connect up to Pioneer around Reiman Road and Bertsinger. The green one roughly goes along the 35th Avenue alignment, and this is the environmental stage, which is kind of the next phase in this process. As with any environmental processes, obviously no build is still an option, as well as some type of a low-capital transportation system management alternative. Those are typically addressed in the environmental stage. We had two submittals when we put out the RFQ earlier this year, interviewed both teams, and in the interview process, the WSP team with PBS as their primary partner on the project was identified as the top-ranked team for negotiations. Those negotiations were considered successful, which is why we're here. I do want to point out a couple things, because this is a little bigger and a little different than we might have experienced before, but this is setting up for the potential of federal funds. So we're doing this with what's called NEPA, or National Environmental Policy Act, as well as the state version of that, which is required on any projects. So there is a rather substantial environmental phase in this, and that's, we need to make sure that we are addressing what those requirements would be if and when we do get federal funds for the project, to make sure that we've complied with all those environmental regulations. It'll be kind of a two-step process. The first step is to do what's called a critical issues analysis and take what information can be gleaned from that, more of a deeper level than we've done before, to a point where council can identify, select a preliminary locally-preferred alternative, and yes, that is a term that is dictated by the process, to take the next stage, which is more of the detailed environmental study, which at this point, we're assuming is environmental assessment. Once that gets through the process, there'll be a kind of a finding, whether finding is finding of impacts, finding of no significant impacts, or finding with some mitigation that comes with the project. Then, with the blessing of the state and federal resource agencies, move into the next stage, which is what we call Phase Two. At Phase Two is preliminary engineering, as well as permits, and identifying a funding strategy for the actual construction, or final design and construction of the project. So this is about a two, two-and-a-half-year process from start to finish, so it's not a trivial amount of work, which is why the budget here is not to exceed $850,000. All of that money is coming from the surcharge that has been assessed on Ridgefield Heights in the G Creek Plateau. Future funding is also subject to a surcharge, and we'll be talking about that next month when we talk about the capital facilities plan. At this point, there are no city general funds, since it's all being funded out of that transportation impact fee surcharge already collected. So with that, I will end my presentation and return it to Mayor and council for any questions.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Green. Council, we'll begin with any questions. Does anybody have any questions for staff on this one? No questions. So I guess I'll just ask really quickly, like with this phase, are we going to, are we going to lead to like an ultimate recommendation, or is this like for the red or the green, or is this, is this something that is still kind of like largely presenting to us, and then we decide, or is a consultant going to sort of drive a little bit of that based on what's feasible?
The consultants, as we did with the alternatives analysis, the consultants will do a number of technical studies, come up with some findings and conclusions, kind of pros and cons, but in the end, council will have the requests from staff to select a preliminary preferred alternative to move into the detailed environmental assessment stage. So we would need to have a preferred alternative in order to study that, and then eventually start design work on that alternative.
Gotcha. Okay, great. Counselor Davis?
Yeah, thank you. Would there be any elements to this phase that wouldn't be covered by the fees that have been paid by the developer?
At this point, no. This is fully covered by what we've already received in those fees.
Okay, thanks.
All right, other questions, council? Okay. You see, I would, I would accept the motion then.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve awarding the contract for the 35th Avenue G Creek Plateau Extension Project Environmental Stage Consultant Contract to WSP for an amount not to exceed $850,000.
A second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to accept the motion to award the G Creek Plateau Extension Project Environmental Stage Consultant Contract. Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor say, let's see here, yeah, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Thank you very much, council. Onto our second item of business tonight. This is the approval of Ridgefield Heights Phase Four Plat. Ms. Lust?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council, and members of the public. The item before you this evening is a final plat for Phase Four of the Ridgefield Heights development. The map before you shows the overall location of Ridgefield Heights, which with Phase Four being sort of centrally located to that immediately north of Phase Three, which is the most recent phase to come through council for plating approval. Right, next slide, please. This is the overall Ridgefield Heights plan, again showing where Phase Four is located in the overall scheme. The project overall has 177 single-family detached residential lots per the preliminary plat approval, as well as the development agreement. And then the next slide shows Phase Four itself, which has 20 single-family detached residential lots. The average lot area is a little over 7,500 square feet, and the range of lot areas is between just about 6,000 and just under 10,000 square feet. Main feature of this phase is a 7.2-acre open space in critical areas tract. That's the kind of northern half of Phase Four. It includes a few features, including nature trails with connections to the existing trail system built with Trail Phase One, and then to the west, future trail connections to Phase Five, which is the final phase of the project. It also includes a common area in that open space tract, which is highlighted on the screen before you. The main feature of that common area is a picnic shelter, which will subsequently require a building permit showing that it complies with a design approved through the Ridgefield Heights Development Agreement. It's kind of a barn appearance picnic shelter featuring wood beams and kind of stone bases, as well as picnic tables. So, and a further note on that, it is included, the construction of that shelter hasn't been completed. It isn't concluded in a performance bond for this project, which was actually submitted today. The purpose of doing it that way is that, the intent is that this common area gets developed out, and the shade shelter built in the dry season rather than the rainy spring is why that decision was made. And so in addition to the performance bond being held for the property, the developer has agreed not to submit building permits for lots 129 through 137, sort of the central lots of this phase, until, until that time. So procedurally, going through what goes into a final plat review before it comes before council, projects go through, of course, the preliminary plat, and then the civil engineering site plan. After that site construction, the infrastructure and groundwork is approaching completion. That's the time when an applicant does come to us and apply for final plat. It's required within five years of that preliminary plat approval. We have several staff members on our team who contribute to reviewing the final plat, planning reviews for compliance with previous decisions, including the preliminary plat and the development agreement. Engineering also reviews for compliance with those previous decisions, including the civil engineering plan set and the development agreement. We're looking at conditions of approval from the preliminary plat that are due at the time of final plat, and making sure those have all been met. And then finally, on the technical side, a survey review is performed. That's looking at the plat sheets themselves, making sure measurements, numbers, labeling is all correct. So a lot of looking at, between those three teams, looking at the sort of geometry of the plat itself, but also the plat notes, requirements that will be recorded on the plat, and making sure they're consistent and thorough. As that review of the plat itself is progressing, our development inspector is also tracking progress to complete those site improvements. As, as we've gone through on several of these projects, by the time a project comes before council, the private improvements are substantially complete. Public improvements are either complete, or if there are outstanding items, that's what's covered under the performance bond. And we do have the latitude, per our legal counsel, to use the performance bond to cover items such as, in this case, the shade shelter that are on property owned and maintained by the HOA, but available and intended for public use. All right, just to close out this explanation, once a project is ready to go before council, in other words, all the comments on the plat sheets themselves have been addressed, improvements are complete or bonded for, and then we have a statutory requirement to bring this before you within 30 days. So in the case of Phase Four, staff found that the project was ready on April 24th. It's May 22nd, that's 28 days, so within that window is how the scheduling worked out for this one. So with that, I will turn it back to you, Mayor, for any further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lust. Okay, council, any question or discussion on this item? We'll start down at the far end. We'll go with Councilmember Hamilton, we'll work our way.
Thank you. I have a question for our attorney. May I proceed with said question? Okay. So for the benefit of the public and to ensure transparency, could we have the city attorney explain the legal framework we're operating under here, particularly whether the council has the authority to approve, modify, or deny this action?
Absolutely. Can you hear me okay this evening?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, wonderful. So I do want to clarify something that is, I think I've had to present this in just about every city I've ever worked in. It is, it is a common issue, but the council does not sit in its typical capacity as a legislative body when it's approving a final plat. Final plats are governed under Title 5817, a state law that governs how properties can be subdivided, and that state law limits the discretion that cities have when approving a final plat. So there's some language at Section 170 of that chapter, and it states that if the final plat is conforming to the preliminary plat, and is conforming with all the, you know, the state laws and the city regulations that are, that that plat is vested to, that it shall be approved. And then the following section actually provides for the right to appeal that decision if it is approved or denied, and that decision is appealed under LUPA. And so if, in the event that, the council needs to evaluate whether or not it has met all the requirements, and if it has, then it needs to be approved. If it is disapproved, then that failure may have some liability on the city, because that, Washington has very strong vested rights laws, and that applicant has gone through all the steps that the city identified at the outset that it needed to comply with. So it's unable to add different conditions or add additional rules to that final, that final plat, once it's complied with all of the things that have been identified. So I hope that provides a little bit of a background, and then if you have more specific questions, I'm happy to try to answer those as well. But that's the statute that we're operating under in this case.
Thank you.
Okay. You're good? Okay, thank you, Ms. Parker. We appreciate it. On the Counselor Burkle, I believe you had a couple of questions?
I have a much simpler question. Talking about the open area, I see what looks like an amphitheater. Would that be correct?
That is correct.
Any idea, will they be grass seats, hard seats? Will there be a stage? Just a little further explanation, please?
I do not have the details for those amphitheater steps. Something I can get for you following up.
Thank you.
No questions? Let's, Mayor Protim, any questions?
So no questions, but we toured this yesterday, and the developer explained this to us very clearly. This is really a very beautiful spot, and I think the amphitheater is an idea that they have, that they're working with for the public to be able to use, but I don't think they have any exact design specifics about it. But to me, it looked like it's going to be a very, very beautiful open spot for people to be able to use there, so, yeah.
Yeah, cool, okay. I'll go further. Counselor Favella?
I did not attend that tour, and just for community's sake, I think there's been a lot of lessons learned out of this development.
Oh, yeah.
And it's unfortunate that the residents in that area feel unheard and unseen during this process, and it does not feel good to have something on the agenda that we're essentially having to move forward, even though we really can't say no, essentially, and it puts us all in an awkward situation. So I just, for transparency, I want to recognize that I, I get that. That's all I have.
Great, thanks, Counselor. Counselor Davis?
Yeah, I, I guess want to build on the, some of the elements that are involved in the open space. Picnic shelter sounds really cool, and the amphitheater is definitely a unique element that we haven't seen. I guess I'm curious, once that's in, what is the agreement in regards to like, the ongoing maintenance, and even like, for, you know, a feature like that, like scheduling or things like that, and access? How is that laid out?
So the ownership and maintenance are the responsibility of the homeowners association of everything in tract B, including the amphitheater, the picnic shelter.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, and it is permanently accessible by the public, and that is memorialized as a plat note too, and recorded.
So is it not going to be then something that can be reserved, like the picnic shelter or the amphitheater for that matter? Do we know yet?
So I think the best example of that is DeMello Park that we have in the city, where there's a picnic shelter in that area. The HOA has maintenance responsibilities of that as well, but it is accessible to the public.
Yeah.
By plat note. So by plat note, if it is accessible to the public, it may not be reserved and kept away from the public. So for reservation standpoints in DeMello, there are no reservations. People have birthday parties there all the time.
Yeah.
And they just go and show up there.
Yeah. Okay, so I guess, I mean, that part of my question was more aimed towards the amphitheater. If that's a bigger element, and, you know, potentially, you know, like a garage band wants to rock out down there for the neighbors or something like that, like is that something you can reserve?
Not only the neighbors, but you as well.
I would go too.
Even though you're not a neighbor, you are absolutely able to go, because you're part of the public, and you're a resident of Ridgefield, and you have every right to be able to go there.
But they would have to do it as a, like a pop-up thing, as opposed to, we are going to reserve the amphitheater on, you know, next Friday, whereas if it's a pop-up thing, like I could go down there and be like, oh no, I'm using the amphitheater, or whatever. That's, I guess, my question.
Quick answer is yes. It would be as a pop-up. It would be as an informally reserved area.
Because as far as I know, this is, that's an asset that's pretty unique to our community, at least. So I was just curious about how that was going to operate once it's installed, and, you know, we're off to the races. Okay, all right, thanks.
Good, okay. Council, any other questions or discussion to be had on this agenda item? Seeing none, I would ask for a motion.
I move to approve the Ridgefield Heights Phase Four Final Plat as presented. I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the Ridgefield Heights Phase Four Final Plat as presented. Any remaining discussion, council? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, council. Our next item of business tonight is the Adoption of Engineering Standards, Volume Three, Parks, Trails, and Recreation Design and Construction Standards. Mr. Crownheart, good to see you, sir. Mr. Crownhart, good to see you, sir.
Good to see you as well, Mayor and council, and it is always a pleasure to be back here talking about parks. With that, let me get my presentation up. All right, tonight we'll be talking about the Engineering Standards, Volume Three. We've presented to you already, and as well as Parks Board, to discuss these potential standards, and they have, we have since incorporated your feedback and are bringing them back to you for final discussion and potential consideration. With that, I do want to note that the Parks Board has provided a formal recommendation to adopt as presented, and that is for your consideration. To remind you, the Parks and Trail standards are here to help set benchmarking, to help define inclusive design principles, to ensure that we are growing in a way that is accommodating the future needs and the current needs of our residents, and ensuring that we can maintain these assets long-term. With that, council, you've been presented these standards before, and they are included in an attachment. Do you have any discussion? And I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor.
Ah, okay. I thought we were going to get the whole, the whole deal again, but that's great. Council, any discussion or any questions for Mr. Crownhart on this one? Mr. Davis?
Of course. Yes, thank you. Certainly, I appreciate diving into this and appreciate the work that's been put into developing what I think is a very comprehensive set of standards. As we were reviewing it, one of the components that stood out to me is not really being brought forward, what had to do with like the playground surfacing. And, you know, to me, when we're talking about inclusivity and accessibility, like having a surface that people with different mobility devices require is like, to me, a fundamental component. And we did get the email from staff about a, like, some potential language that would speak to some of the options, and, you know, personally, I kind of like some of those options, having reviewed what was put forward in terms of, you know, the surfacing type and the installation kind of cost range. You know, I don't want to necessarily put forward a material or a requirement that is like the highest cost possible, especially when there are going to be scenarios where something different might be more suitable. But I do like the thought of having a requirement that at least starts at the bonded rubber mulch and goes all the way up to the poured-in-place rubber, which is the highest cost. But saying, hey, bonded rubber mulch would at least achieve what is, you know, considered to be, you know, in at least mid-tier from an accessibility standpoint, and I think it's, I think it fits. I think that range that's outlined fits into the values that are put forward in the rest of the plan, and so I would, I mean, I guess further down, I would entertain a motion to amend, you know, the current motion.
Do you have actual, like of what the staff sent, do you have actual language that you would like to amend?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I can read it in. Are we ready for that or not? Okay.
You guys, of course.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I would make an amendment to include the language.
Forgive me, I'm sorry.
Yep.
When you're asking if we were ready for it, we, if that is something you'd like to entertain, you would need to put the motion before the body and then amend that motion.
Right. Okay, yeah. So you would just have to make a motion now? But before we do that, is there any other discussion to be had on this? We'll get some other questions answered first. Councilor Burkle?
I understand that some of the surfaces are, well, if I understand, there's maybe five, six different surfaces available. I understand that the, for lack of a better description, the best one that you could put down is, of course, the most expensive. Would it be reasonable or possible that that surface could be put into one or two parks, and the surface about which you are talking could be put into the rest? Just a question.
Yeah, I think that the language that's outlined would allow for that. You know, it's going to allow for a little bit more of a range, but at least the minimum standard would be something that, it's called bonded rubber mulch. And so you kind of think of it like, I mean, a lot of them are recycled tennis shoes, and some recycled tires and stuff like that, and it's still, you know, not a smooth surface like an asphalt. It's a little bit chunkier, but it's, they're bonded together, so you can actually get a grip. There's some padding if somebody falls. You know, one of the benefits, and we talked about this the other day, of the bark chips is that it does provide a good cushion and a good pad. It's just getting through it. I mean, even thinking about a parent that's maybe trying to approach a play structure with a stroller, I mean, it's pretty hard, it's pretty challenging, and so it sounds like the bonded rubber mulch would at least be a significant upgrade and a lot less expensive than the pour-in.
Is that surface, for lack of a better description, solid, or is it loose?
I think it's a kind of a little bit of both, but I'll yield a.
Absolutely, I can absolutely, I can absolutely answer that question for you, counselor. So when looking at the types of surfaces you're looking at, the media that you're speaking of is, there's the pour-in-place rubber surfacing, which is similar to what you see at DeMello Park. There are rubber tiles that you typically see, some of our, the Vancouver Elementary Schools have these in those places. Bonded rubber mulch is essentially recycled tires and rubber that's been cleaned and sterilized so it can be on a space such as a playground. They are, it's blown into place to make sure it's got the proper amount of material to adhere to the ASTM or American, it's according to the Playground Safety Inspection Standards. And what they didn't do is they put adhesive glue on top of that to then hold all of it in place so that it does not shift around, but it still maintains that spongy component to it. You typically see the blown-in rubber mulch bonded in rehabs to parks, so taking a playground that was previously engineered wood fibers or wood chips, and then transitioning them to a rubberized mulch surface.
Thank you.
We'll go to Councilor Hamilton, and then Councilor Wells.
Thank you. First of all, I always love your presentations, I think you do such a great job. I really think it's important for us to keep in mind with those top three, I agree, I like the language that we get to move based on the location, that we're not bond, like stuck to one thing. I think the maintenance impact is a big part of this piece because it might be more expensive upfront, but then the maintenance factor of that lasting longer, I think that's a really important element, so I like that those top two are like that. The rubber tiles are, I think, especially appealing with the color variation you can do and creating hopscotch or wherever, stuff like that that won't wear away like paint would over time, so I like that that's a little squishier, but I like that we have the option to look at what will be best for the community and base, you know, the fees into that too. So I am a big fan of the language that you said too, and I think this is great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just, I did some research on all of the, oh, sorry, Mr. Mayor.
I would like to let Michelle Wells go first, because I.
I wasn't paying attention.
Sorry. You've been waiting, so I want to, I want to give him his time, sorry.
No, the only question is, how long has this glued rubber been on the market? Do you know that?
I do not know how long they've been on the market. I've seen them in play structures for probably about the last 10 years.
Okay. And I was going to add to that, then there doesn't seem to be any UV breakdown on them far as the glue on top.
Well, every surface that we have on here is going to have some level of degradation over time, including the bonded rubber mulch. The surface that will last the longest is typically your pour-in-place, as long as it's installed properly and maintained properly, but the bonded rubber mulch will deteriorate over time, there will be spots that open up, and that's where maintenance comes in to do patches and repairs. And for any of these materials, we have an operations and maintenance team that either knows how to do these or can properly, you know, take the trainings and get the certifications to properly maintain them.
Can you re-glue them?
Absolutely.
I mean, you put another mastic over the top.
Absolutely. For all, for the pour-in-place, the rubber tiles, for the pour-in-place, you can do patches. For the bonded rubber mulch, you can replace the mulch and do another glue, and for the rubber tiles, it's simply replacing that rubber tile.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilor Favella.
Thank you. Sorry about that, I got all into my own head. With the rubber tiles, one thing that I did learn is that they need really good drainage, and they also shift during freeze, so I think we need to be mindful of that and not putting those in a large area because they do have high upfront cost. They are, you know, good, but just being mindful of that, that we're not doing large areas at a time because eventually that could cost more money over time with the weather that we do have here.
Absolutely, and when it comes to any of these play surfacing, drainage is absolutely imperative, including your engineered wood fibers, because water does get waterlogged in those spaces, which creates then issues with making sure that it's got the impact attenuation to protect a child if they were to fall.
Great. Counsel, any other questions or comments for staff on this one? Okay, seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the Parks Trails and Recreation Capital Facilities Plan as presented.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we've moved and seconded to approve the engineering, Parks and Trails Recreation Area Engineering Standards as presented. Any questions?
I would like to amend the motion and add the language, in alignment with the City of Ridgefield's commitment to safety, accessibility, and leadership in inclusive design principles, all playgrounds located within community parks shall be required to utilize one of the following safety surfacing systems: pour-in-place rubber surfacing, rubber tile surfacing, bonded rubber mulch. Exceptions to these requirements may be granted at the sole discretion of the city, provided that a compelling reason is demonstrated. Acceptable justification may include, but not limited to, playgrounds intentionally designed as nature play areas where alternative surfacing may support environmental education, natural aesthetics, or ecological function. All exceptions must be reviewed and approved by the city prior to final approval.
The amendment has been moved, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on this, council? Specific thing? I just have a question. So like, as presented, so I like there's a caveat on there that says like, you know, if there's a reason, you know, beyond this, this is, these are engineering standards, this isn't necessarily like city code, would we be able to, like, would one of the reasons be if you came to us for a park design and we looked at them and said, hey, budget's really tight on this one, this kind of park, something like that? Is that something we would be able to amend on our own as council, as a legislative body? Or is?
As a legislative body, it's your final priority.
I mean, I figure it's much, okay. Yeah. Cool. I've been really big into inclusive parks as well, I mean, this is kind of, Councilor Davis and I, we kind of champion this issue, so I'm glad to see it. I just want to make sure we're not, we're not putting the city in a position where it is going to be infeasible based off costs. You know, I know that, for example, Paradise Point Park or whatever it will be named, you know, we've had to make some adjustments based on costs, and so, you know, like this is one of those where you want to have a good playground, play surface that is, makes it accessible, but I also don't want to put us in a position where we are shortchanging ourselves on maybe the central play features as well, so, but it sounds like we are covered there, so I'll go with that. Any other questions or comments, council? Okay, so it's just, you moved, the vote is as amended, correct?
No.
That's right, okay. Okay, so if there's no other questions on the amendment, I will, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the amendment carries, and then back to the motion as amended.
As amended.
Yes. Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of the amended motion as presented, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Thank you, council. Okay, moving on, don't go too far, Mr. Crownhart, we're going to go into the next item of business, approval of the Parks Trails and Recreation Capital Facilities Plan. Back to you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and council, and lucky you, you just have two park agenda items tonight. You get three and you get a punch card. All right, tonight we're bringing forward to you the Parks Trails and Recreation Capital Facilities Plan. As we've previously discussed, this is part of the comprehensive plan for the City of Ridgefield, is an opportunity for you to plan out where Parks and Recreation may go in terms of the construction of new facilities, as well as helping you plan for the future. With that, I do want to remind you that there was a formal recommendation from the Parks Board to adopt as recommended, as presented, and it is for your consideration. Slide. To review, the Capital Facilities Plan is not a budget document, but more of a planning document for council to help plan out where they end up going in terms of our parks, trails, and recreational facilities. Those can include parks, community, neighborhood, and pocket, as well as our trails, sort of varying degrees across the city. Slide. With that, we included a couple of revisions into the latest Capital Facilities Plan based on the feedback we received from you at our last presentation. Those include, including a couple of implementation principles that are included into the Capital Facilities Plan. This includes the principles of staying flexible and opportunistic, of being, of looking out for opportunities to build unique assets as they come to the city. To maintain a project pipeline wherein we are consistently moving master plans to design, and then finally to construction in orderly fashion, so that we can keep projects moving forward. With that, our third implementation principle that you provided was to complete and celebrate at least one capital project per year, so that we are continuing to show momentum and continuing to serve our ever-growing population. Four was to avoid phase builds and to try our best to build parks fully where financially feasible. Five is to ensure equitable access to parks across our community, and this will be something that will be included in the Parks Recreation and Open Spaces Plan that we'll be working on next year. And finally was to prioritize two new community parks, specifically on the east side of the freeway, as well as in the Cardy Road subarea. Slide. With that, council, I'd like to turn back over to you.
Thanks.
All right, council, I'll look to my right side first, any questions or comments? Councilor Davis?
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, I absolutely appreciate the work that went into this, especially the trails component. The last bullet point that we talked about was carving out opportunities for a community park like at Cardy Subarea, as well as on the east side, and one of the things that we would talk about when I was on Parks Board was what we refer to as geographic equity. And so, I mean, I want to put this forward, but I think that that could be a critical point that we include on future versions is having more of an identification of what part of our city a lot of these elements are going in, and making sure we're okay with the balance that that represents. And a lot of the, a lot of the inventory is going to be based on opportunity, right? You know, it's going to be where we have the opportunity to do certain things. Boys Park's a perfect example. We didn't seek that out. That was a family that wanted their property to become a park, and so we're rolling with it. And so, you know, I don't want to be too tied to that, but I think that that, as we move forward, that is a, more of a classification I'd like to see us work with, is a geographic equity piece, but I'm comfortable with how this sits because I think our two biggest ones are for one, the east side, and then the soon-to-be-onboarded Cardy Subarea.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else on my right side? Councilor Favella, Mayor Potemny? Any questions or comments? Okay, okay, over to this side? Quick and easy, all right. Well, in that case, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the Parks Trails and Recreation Capital Facilities Plan as presented.
I'll second it.
We'll go with Mayor Potemny, I heard her voice first, I'll second on that one for the record. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the Parks Trails and Recreational Capital Facilities Plan as presented. Any remaining discussion, council? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor and council.
All right, our final item of business this evening is a motion and approval of the Water Conservation Strategy. Mr. Thamer will give you a minute to get situated.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and council. Tonight, I'm bringing back the Water Conservation Strategy that I presented last meeting. We incorporated the changes that you guys, or that the council requested. Just as a reminder, the Water Just as a reminder, the Water Conservation Strategy is a structured approach to managing water demand during system outages, emergencies and peak seasonal demand. The plan consists of five distinct stages that are designed to encourage water conservation as the demand on the water system increases. So tonight, we're going, going to go over a quick overview of the plan, and I'll highlight the changes since it was last before you. So first off, we have the communication part of the plan. Communication is key with this plan, each stage's customer responsibilities will be clearly communicated, and education and outreach will be a primary focus with the enforcement being a last resort. The changes for communication, for homeowners' associations will be contacting the board members through our database of HOAs and communicating with them what the requirements of each stage are and which stage we're in. For contractors, we will be reaching out to them through the hydrant meter rental agreement, making sure that all the requirements are clearly spelled out in the agreement, and then that they are contacted through their primary contact information as we move through the stages. For other contractors and businesses, we'll be using our business license list to reach out to contractors and businesses that will be affected by the stages as we move through So now, moving on to the five stages. For stage one, the change that we made was to begin the stage May 1st instead of June 1st, and it will end on September 30th. For stage four, the change that we made was that we will now be issuing fines for non-compliant customers during, during that stage, as well as stage five, the emergency phase. For stage five, we added a water production component, so that not only is stage five triggered by a major source being offline, but it also has, we also have to be over 2.5 million gallons per day production and a component goes offline. So with that, I will return it to you, Mr. Mayor, for discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Thamer. Council, discussion, Mayor Potem, we'll start with you.
So remind me how we're going to notify on a daily basis, like, of the stages to, to the Ridgefield residents? I think it said it on the first page, but I can't.
Yes, so, there's going to be several ways we're going to do that, so, through our website, we'll have updates and a banner saying which stage we're in and what those requirements are. We'll also be using phone calls and emails through our utility billing system to reach out to residents and businesses, letting them know which stage we're in. We'll be using social media and utility billing inserts, and we'll also have water conservation stage signs along Pioneer.
So, it seems to me like it's a possibility that this could change in the middle of a day, of a hot day, or there was some kind of an emergency with a well or whatever, I'm talking about stage five now. So, so we have a lot of people that don't actually get bills, I've never, I haven't seen a bill for, I don't know, five years, because I pay it online and I don't even look at it, okay, so, and I know there's probably a lot of people like me, so I wouldn't look at the bill to know, and I know there's a lot of senior citizens that probably don't even look at a website, maybe they don't even know how, I mean, I'm not saying that it's impossible, I'm just wanting to make sure that we have thought through all the ways to be able to notify people, you know what I mean? I just, certainly can't call everybody, right?
Right, yeah, we'll be using automated phone calls to reach out to people, and again, the, the main peak demand that we're targeting is early in the morning, so if it does switch midday, we wouldn't be as concerned until that following morning, so we would have time that afternoon to make phone calls, to change the sign, to get the word out.
And Mayor Potem, a good example of that is when we've had some road projects where we needed to really get the word out on a quick turn to neighborhoods, where through our utility billing system, we have phone call, that we have phone numbers, that we can then, we have an automated phone system where we can get the word out.
Oh, okay, okay, all right.
And it was, it's been very effective for folks who really don't see the signs or wouldn't see the social media.
Okay, all right. I just want to make sure we have a way to notify people, okay, thank you.
Great, other questions or comments? Councillor Hamilton?
Thank you, minor's comments, I think it was smart, and I like that we changed it to May 1st, I think that was great, and then integrating the HOAs is key too, so I think those are two really important features that you added.
Yeah, just, I guess, piggybacking on the communication piece that Mayor Potem brought up, do we have the opportunity for like text opt-in for utilities, or like on all that? Like, that can be sort of...
Quick answer is yes, yeah, we do.
Okay, that's sort of nested under phone calls?
Yes, yeah, we have, we have texts, there's email lists and there's text opt-ins that we have, and so a lot of us already receive kind of texts on a regular basis from the city for different reasons, so yes, that is available.
Perfect, thanks.
Great, we'll go to councillor Burkle, and back over to councillor Favela.
Just a comment for the audience, last year, we had no days where we were in an emergency situation, and we had only 10 days when we were in what is referred to as stage four, where the water production reached 3 million gallons a day. So I think, the only thing that could create a problem would be an unforeseen matter over which we have no control, I think otherwise, everybody's done a pretty darn good job of using water, thank you.
Great, thank you, councillor, councillor Favela.
I'm probably getting into the weeds here, but there are Airbnbs here in Ridgefield, and those utility bills go to the owner of those Airbnbs or rental, some rental properties, the owners keep the utilities in their name and they pay that included in the rent. So, in that message, could we modify that if you are, if you have tenants, that it's your responsibility to let your tenants know of this, so that the tenants are like, I had no idea, I, no one even called me?
Yes, we could definitely do that, and I believe that we do that with, with other, like, with our bills, because it's going, a lot of times the bills are the tenant's responsibility, but we also notify the owners of the property as well.
Are you, are you proposing to include that as part of this plan, or just saying as a suggestion on the communications effort?
Just a suggestion on the communications effort, so that there's a closed loop in that communication, and nobody inadvertently ends up getting a fine because they missed out on important notifications.
Fair enough, okay. Any other questions or comments from council? Just a quick question, because this isn't, this isn't an ordinance or anything, but when would this go into effect, because we're kind of entering, we're already past May 1st, we're coming up on June 1st, when would this be effective?
Tomorrow.
It's a great question, I'm actually going to turn over, turn it over to our city attorney to answer, usually ordinances, there's a 30-day period of time prior to when they take effect, for the Water Conservation Action Plan and Strategy, I'm not sure, so let's, we should ask our city attorney.
Absolutely, I am happy to weigh in, can you hear me okay?
We can, yes, thank you, ma'am.
Okay, perfect. So, the 30-day requirement is specific to ordinances, and even that allows certain exceptions for emergencies and other items, so, this is a sort of a policy document in terms of how the city is going to apply its water conservation plan, so I don't, I do not believe, at, at most, if you would have wanted a document to, to adopt this, I would have recommended a resolution as opposed to an ordinance, and, and those are in effect immediate, immediately, so, this motion would put this into effect immediately, and I do not think that will run afoul of any requirements under state law for the, that relate to ordinances.
Great, thank you, Ms. Parker, it's good to know, I think we should, I was going to suggest we should do something expedite that, but I think we're good.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, any other discussion, council? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the Water Conservation Strategy as presented.
A second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the Water Conservation Strategy as presented. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries, thank you very much, council?
Thank you, mayor and council.
All right, we blew through business tonight, that's great, we're going to go back to public comment right now, anyone wishing to address city council regarding items not subject to a specific public hearing, may come forward at this time to the podium, or use the raise hand feature located on the toolbar at the bottom of your screen for controls over the phone, press star nine for raise hand, and press star six to mute or unmute. Please state your name and limit your comments to three minutes. Mr. Choce.
Hello, how you doing? My name is Rich Choce, I live up next to Ridgefield Heights. That's, that's, I wasn't expecting to speak tonight, but I see the attorney was here for the Ridgefield Heights for making sure everything is legal, and my question is, everything that's in the development agreement, do they have to follow this time, like align roads? There's been some problem, you know, I think you've all been getting Angela's emails about concern about aligning the roads, and the city says that they don't have to do that, well, one of our main, we, from day one, all we just wanted the, the developers to follow the rules. We were inundated with dust and mud and road closures, and we just wanted to follow the rules, and I, I realize that you have to develop this, or approve this, this phase four, and that whole 100-house thing is completely out the window because the road is funded now, right? So there might be 500 houses now, so we all know that, but I just was wondering if after 3 o'clock, are we going to be completely inundated with dust again for years? Because that's when they get serious about moving the dirt, you guys all know that, we've talked about that, and there's no enforcement. I was just wondering if you got like, maybe some retired people that you can deputize and drive around to these developments and check up and see what's going on, just, we just want the rules followed, that's it, I don't think we're asking for too much, just, obviously, that's when they start moving dirt, 3 o'clock, and when the inspectors go home, so, please, do something about that, that's all we want.
Thank you, Mr. Choce. Mr. Jennings?
My name is Michael Jennings. Caring for ourselves, excuse me, caring for ourselves and others makes us stronger and healthier and happier. Thank you for your caring for Ridgefield. My sister gave me a long list of issues of poor management of her city in California. Many cities lack good management. Thanks again.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the room tonight wishing to give public comment? Ms. Julie, anybody online?
Not seeing anyone online, mayor.
Okay, seeing none, we will move forward to council and staff reports, let's start at the far right end with Mr. Davis.
Yeah, thank you, mayor, so, just a few things happening, I had the, the CTRAN board meeting last week on Tuesday, and they moved forward with a lot of their business, there was not a whole lot going on right now with the, the issue over the bridge and light rail, so it was a little bit more of a return to the, to the standard agenda, but there will be more coming with that in the coming months. I did attend, like, a lot of us, the Junction Neighborhood Association meeting, thought that was really informative, it was great to see people out there and engaged with the Neighborhood Association, and then, this last Saturday, I did what was called MICA's Mini Marathon, which supports an organization called MICA's Miles. MICA is a student at Canvas High School and has some physical disabilities, and his dad is a runner and pushes him in a specially-designed chair, and they run marathons together, and that is something I am all about, and so they do this as a fundraiser, it was down at Frenchman's Bar in Vancouver, and so it was really cool to be able to run that, run that with actually those two guys, it was, it was a lot of fun, really rewarding, so...
Cool?
Yeah.
Good to hear it, okay. Councillor Favela?
Yes, thank you. I attended our ECHO meeting, which is the ending community homelessness organization, there's a focus right now on dry and hot weather and identifying shelters that would be in place, during the winter, there were 41 days of severe weather that were called and six shelters that were available. They're also looking at federal funding cuts and the ability to respond to those needs as that budget goes into place. I filmed the hot crossing video, that was super fun, the crossing at Ridgefield High School. Attended the fire commission meeting tonight, 2025 legislative session recap for, or with AWU C earlier this afternoon, and it is EMET, National EMS Week, so thank you to our first responders, specifically EMTs and paramedics, which includes my husband, but thank you for all of you serving our community and making sure that you can show up for us in a time of need.
Great, thank you, we'll skip, Mayor Potem, and we'll jump over to councillor Wells.
Okay, on the 17th, I attended the Hazeldale Parade of Bands, I rode on Clark Reginald's float, and that was really good, I did not have to keep up with handing candy out when we had our chauffeur with the pedal to the metal. Mr. Stewart, yeah, when, when we do the 4th of July, you start panting, and the next thing you know, you're back three floats. Anyway, it was really, really, really nice, the weather turned out good, it was sprinkling a little bit at first, and then it turned out to be a beautiful day. Then on the 19th, I also attended the Ridgefield Junction Neighborhood Association, 120 people showed up for that, that was, our city manager gave a really great presentation and showcased, showcased the city for all the people. The 21st, the briefing, three-plus hours, and tonight, the city council.
Great. I can offer to drive for the parade this year if you think...
You're elected.
Okay, sorry, you're probably too fast still. Yeah. Yeah, councillor Burkle, we'll go to you.
Thank you, mayor, just a couple of things, on May the 9th, I attended the Legislative Breakfast in Vancouver, and we had 10 of our legislators there who talked about priorities, what's going to happen, what's happening, and some of the problems they're experiencing, it was very, very beneficial to be there. I also attended the Junction Meeting, and as I've said in the past, any of you that have never gone to that, you really should, it's a very, very informative, well-run, on-time meeting. And just one last request, any of you that have always had an incredible desire to prune grapes in the roundabouts, I offer you the opportunity tomorrow morning at 9 o'clock on the east side roundabout. Thank you.
Great, thank you, councillor. Councillor Hamilton?
Yes, thank you, mayor. I too, attended the Ridgefield Junction Neighborhood Association meeting for my first time, which I was thrilled to be there, and I agree with councillor Burkle, it was a wealth of information. I also met with Mary Kay from Ridgefield Main Street this week, and started to dive in, that's one of my council assignments now, and so I'm really excited as a business owner to talk to other business owners and, and keep that downtown area as beautiful and popping as we want it to be. And then I did go up to Ridgefield Heights and toured, just to get myself more information, and that was the other day, so, that's it.
Great, thank you, we'll go to Mayor Potem.
I also attended the Legislative Breakfast, which was, again, very informative, spent about five days sick and was not able to go to the Ridgefield Junction Meeting, but this morning, I attended the CREDC meeting, which is the Columbia River Economic Development Council, and unfortunately, there was a lot of bad news there about Washington business, and what, what came out of the meeting this morning very strongly was that the state of Washington, with these new taxes that are going into place, has moved into, from being one of the top 10 states in the United States to be, to be favorable for businesses, people want to move here, businesses want to move here, to being in the bottom five. And everyone there was very concerned about people wanting to move out of the state, take And everyone there was very concerned about people wanting to move out of the state, take their residences out of the state, because of these new taxes that have been, that are going into effect now, evidently, very quickly in July, I believe it is. And there was a lot of, lot of concern about that, because even the very small businesses are having new taxes put on them. Every, every level of business is having new taxes put on them. And so it just was a very different meeting than what we usually have, because it's been celebrating business coming to Washington at every other meeting I've been to. So it was, it was, it was concerning. People there were very concerned, and, and so I guess there's not really anything we can do about it now. The budget was signed into, into effect, but I think that if you want to contact your legislators about it and make statements, you know, to them about how we feel about it, I think it's probably appropriate to be able to do that, because there were a lot of new taxes put in place. Let's see, what else did I do? Oh, and then yesterday, I was able to have lunch with, or coffee with, the newest employee for Clark Regional Wastewater District, which is the former La Center Maria's, yeah, from La Center, that, that was, yeah, the head of there. So she's going to work for them, and she's so excited about working for Clark Regional Wastewater, which will be a great, great spot for her, so.
Good.
That was it for me.
Great, thanks, Mayor Potem. Only thing for me tonight, just is, we're headed into a long weekend for many of you. This will be a, maybe a three-day weekend, we're going into Memorial Day weekend, and it's always a good time to relax before we kick off summer. I just want to take a quick moment to acknowledge that the Memorial Day holiday coming up. This is more than just a long weekend, actually, it's more than barbecues and more than mattress sales. It's a time to remember those who gave their lives in service to this country. And however you choose to spend the day, I hope to take a moment and pause and maybe take a brief moment to reflect whether you've served, and if you've served, thank you for your service. I myself am a veteran, and this is a meaningful holiday to me that I always remember too, because I have, in my service, I have lost those close to me in, when they gave their lives for the service of this country. So just be a part of, maybe being something meaningful, do something to just honor the sacrifices that were made. And if you're looking to work for a way to honor, there are a couple of events, one here in Ridgefield that you can attend. There's a local service at the Ridgefield Cemetery, usually hosted by the American Legion, that'll be at 10 a.m. at the cemetery on Monday morning. If you want to endure a bigger celebration, the National Park Service, Community Military Appreciation Committee, and the Fort Vancouver National Historic Site are jointly putting on together a, an event as well. There'll be a flag raising at 9:30 a.m. along with the ceremony, which begins at 10:00. And I believe they're still doing a parade down there, starting at the Vancouver Barracks Parade Round. So some, definitely some options there, but I hope you'll participate, I hope you'll observe the holiday in some capacity, and just pay some respect for those who gave their lives that this nation might live. So that's all from me. Mr. Stewart, go over to you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council of the community. First of all, thank you very much for the Memorial Day remembrance and for mentioning the service ceremony that will be on Monday, and thank you for your service, sir. Another event that will be occurring next week is next Thursday evening at 6:30 p.m. will be the first game of the Ridgefield Raptors season at the Ridgefield Outdoor Recreation Complex. The first pitch will be thrown out at approximately 6:00 p.m. by our mayor. So we'll be out there, and I know you've been warming your arm up, getting ready for that. So we'll look forward to that. A couple of follow-ups on legislative action, it was already mentioned, kind of the legislative follow-up that's occurred and the budgets that have been signed. At the state level, we were successful as a city in receiving $1.5 million from the state legislature, thanks to our delegation working hard on our behalf to be able to actually fund a significant portion of the project to remediate the slide, the slide potential in the curves on Pioneer. The potential slide area has been a long existing problem. We've had four slides in the past 20 years. We know that that is a potential because it is an ancient slide area on both the lower and upper side of Pioneer. We do have a project that we know will help to alleviate any future slides, and this funding will go a long way toward making that happen. So that was a very good thing from the state legislature, that they granted us that. Secondly, at the federal level, we all know that the FY 2025 budget was shelved, and they did a continuing resolution that was very short-term. In that 2025 budget, we had two potential allocations of funding from congressionally-directed spending. One of them was for our Kennedy Well Project to enhance our capacity for drinking water, and the other one was for South Royal Road, the last section of Royal Road that needs to be completed. As they are looking at the FY 2026 budget, they have reopened the, the portal for requests for funding in congressionally-directed spending. We just found out yesterday that our Congresswoman did resubmit the Kennedy Well Project for $1.5 million, which funds a, an act, one of the wells in Kennedy Well. So that was submitted again for the FY 2026 budget, and we are finalizing our work with Senator Murray's office to resubmit the South Royal Road Project for the FY 2026 budget. So good progress on that. We're obviously paying a lot of attention to whether or not a budget gets completed at the federal level, and because that obvious, that is the key, to making sure that we get those funds. And on that front, we also did receive word that we received 15, a $15 million drinking water state revolving fund loan for our East Side Elevated Reservoir Project for water storage capacity, which is excellent. It is a very, very low-interest loan to be able to do that work. That is also subject to federal budget being passed. So obviously, we have a lot of irons in the fire on the federal side that we want to make sure that we continue to advocate for. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Counsel, questions for the city manager? You're off the hook, sir, okay. We'll go to Mr. Green.
Thank you. It's been a little while since I've had engineering education here, so tonight, engineering education term is punchless walkthrough. That means we have a project that's just about done, we're going through and with the contractor and looking to see if anything needs to be fixed. I'm happy to say that we did that with Tappany today at the overpass with the fence and the art project that's out there, just a few touch-ups. They are substantially complete, and we'll be ready to take that on. They'll, they'll be finished by next week with all their little repairs, and then it's ours.
Great, thank you, Mr. Green. Mr. Thamer.
Thank you. As promised, I brought a picture from the Best Tasting Water Contest.
Thank you.
So there were three judges, independent judges, and they were testing the water or the samples on-site smell and taste.
Palate cleansers.
They have to cleanse their palates.
It's water.
Very cool.
You took it very seriously.
Is there a certification that you go through to be a water tester?
I am not sure.
Right.
How difficult that is to become a tester or a taster.
Is big water there, like Calistoga or Arrowhead or like Fiji? They sponsor the event or anything? They should.
I don't believe so.
That's pretty cool. Okay, thank you. I'm really glad you showed that, that's great, yeah. We'll go, yeah, we'll go to finance, so. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Only thing I wanted to mention is, we did just receive word about a week or so ago for another award that we got for the popular annual financial report from the GFOA, which is the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada. So what that is, is that's an easier-to-read financial statement, although I'm sure everybody in this room has read the 131-page financial report that we did last year. But this one is a little bit easier to read, and it highlights a lot of what we do in Ridgefield, and we worked on that with the communication team, and just got that award, and we're getting ready as we're finishing up our audit and our financial statements for 2024 to resubmit for this year as well.
Gotcha, cool. Congratulations on that, that's pretty notable.
Right, thank you.
That's good, no? I did not read the 130-page report, because I go to the website, because, yes, it's way easier to navigate. Okay, Ms. Lust.
Thank you, Mayor, I don't have anything to add this evening.
Great, okay, questions for Ms. Lust, anybody? Okay, great. Ms. Noten-Aris.
Just wanted to talk about another event that is happening in Ridgefield in a couple of weeks, one of our signature events, the Big Paddle Waterfront Festival. It is a much larger event than it has been in the past. We have more paddles, we have a kayak parade, we have a cornhole tournament, the Booster Clubs bring in a dunk tank, way more games and activities on land, along with, of course, lines, club burgers, and music. And we also have a hayride that will be taking everyone between the waterfront and Davis Park, where Farmers Market will be having their grand opening for the year. And with Farmers Market vendors and for Saturday vendors, we have a record, record number, we are at capacity with almost 90 vendors.
Wow.
So we're gonna have to start prioritizing. So I hope to see you all there.
Great, we'll be there. Okay, questions for Ms. Noten-Aris?
Yes, I would like some names involved at the dunk tank.
Are you volunteering?
Well, that wasn't what I was after, I was curious if there was anybody else.
Counsel Favela, you're not allowed to speak.
I will volunteer, Mr. Davis, thank you.
I'll be out paddling, I mean, you know.
Oh, it will be open after you get back. No, no problem.
We can talk about it.
I'm gonna throw it.
You are? Oh, you're gonna throw, okay, yeah, okay.
So I know me as well, because you're going.
All right. We'll go to Ms. Parker, online.
Well, hello and thanks again, and I do not have anything to report this evening, I'm just happy to answer any questions, and I hope we all get out to enjoy this upcoming sunshine this weekend.
Great, yeah, thank you for being here, and thank you for your contributions earlier. Okay, last one, Chief Dorgut.
I have nothing to add, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, if you've got nothing to add, this meeting is adjourned. I love it, because it's the best part of the job. You had a gavel, why would you not hit that out?